I call this meeting. The chair notes the time is six oh two and I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge, Chair of the Amherst zoning Board of Appeals. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with the roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is here, Mr. Everett Henry.
Here.
Mr. White. Mr. David Slovater.
Here.
And Mr. Craig Meadows.
Here.
The quorum is present. Also attending the meeting tonight is Jacinta Williams, Planner for the Town, Rob Mora, Building Commissioner, and Attorney Carolyn Murray of KP Law, who assists us in drafting and putting together the paperwork and helping us immensely in this process. Thank you to you all. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended again by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but even every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Additionally, the meetings are recorded and may be viewed via the Town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA webpage. If you wish to make a comment, please indicate your wish to do so by raising the raised hand function when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using your telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and town affiliation. Please put yourself back into mute when you have finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes, at the discretion of the Zoning Board of Appeals Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties in interest. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of the of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the Town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw is Section 10.38. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and recorded by town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the Board during the hearing, after which the Board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the Board has completed its questions, the Board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function. The Board will normally hold public hearings where the information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the Board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the Board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the Board is distinct and is evaluated on its own merits, and the Board does not rule by precedent. Statutorily, for the special permit, the Board has 90 days from the close of hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the Board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting Board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded with the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda is listed as publicized as minutes, then a public hearing on ZBA FY 2025-04, Wayfinders, Inc., requests a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts Chapter, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct a 31-unit mixed-income rental housing in a three-story development with 14 proposed parking spots on the premises of 31 Southeast Street, MAP 15A Parcel 20, in the RVC Village Center Residence Zoning District, and a 47-unit mixed-income rental housing in a three-story building with 46 proposed parking spots on the premises of 70 Beltratown Road, MAP Parcel 15C 58, 15C 59, 15C 60, in the RN and FPC Neighborhood Residents and Flood-Proned Conservancy Zoning Districts. This hearing is continued from November 21st, 2024. After that, this general public comment period on any matter not before the Board tonight, other business not anticipated within 48 hours, and adjournment. Do any members of the Board have any declarations to make? Ms. Williams? Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. Your camera is off and we haven't done roll call yet.
We did do.
Did we do a roll call?
Yeah, but my camera wasn't. That's better.
Thank you.
I don't know how. Thank you. The first order of business tonight is minutes, and there are no minutes to approve. So the first order of business is ZBA FY 2025, Wayfinders, Inc., requesting a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B. I would like to begin with the following procedural item. The Board is incorporating all materials and discussions from the prior public hearing on this application into this and into all future sessions of the public hearing, which is continued from November 21st, 2024. We have received the following submissions, new material from the applicant. We've received a new management plan and four new amendments to site plans and building plans, which are listed on the proposed draft decision document. Also, we've received new materials from KP Law, which is the product of consultation between the applicant, staff, KP Law, and myself. Those include a new decision draft dated 12/16, Wayfinders waivers dated 12/17, and Wayfinders waivers for Southeast Street dated 12/9, or 12/18 as well. So we've got a new, we've got a new decision document, and we have two, we have new waivers, as well as we have a new management plan to review. So what I'd like to do now is talk to you about how I think is the best way to proceed tonight. We've got to deal with the management plan, waivers, conditions, and potentially findings. And I think it's best if we deal with each subject altogether. We review the, for example, we review the changes to the management plan. We have comments on it from the Board members, provide for public comment if anything, and then we vote on approval of the required management plan with changes. We do the same thing for waivers. We do the same thing for conditions and same thing for findings. The way to do that is to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open and doing that now, and so we could then deal with each of the items together. If we don't do it that way, we have to deal with the management plan, just reviewing it. We have to review all the different subjects, then go into a public meeting and start the process all over again. I think it's quicker and it's more consistent for us to deal with it in this way, where we go into a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open, and we deal with the management plan, the waivers, the conditions, all together, individually, and we vote on them immediately after the discussion, rather than waiting till we move, till later in the, in the meeting to vote on the, on the changes. So unless there's any objections to that or any questions about that process, which gives everybody the opportunity to question, to amend, or to, to comment on all the items before us, I'd like, I would entertain a motion that we move to the public hearing, public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have, I hear a motion and I hear a second from Mr. Henry and a motion from Mr. Meadows. Is there any discussions or questions about the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. The Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing, and we're now conducting the public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. So the first item is to review the manage, the management plan, the amended management plan. You all received a copy of that, I think, in a couple of weeks ago. Yes, Williams has it up on the Board, and we can run through the changes since our last meeting. Many of these are in direct response to questions that Board members had regarding the management plan. So the first item deals with staff, first number of changes deal with staffing. The first one deals, sets out the project managers and the assistant project managers' time on the sites. It talks about the other changes, the maintenance of books and records that the, the manager and the assistant manager should maintain at each of the sites. The second pair, that's in the second, first and second paragraphs. The third paragraph deals with maintenance staff coverage. Again, that's 20 to 30 hours per week for both sites. It also deals with maintenance, the way in which, the process in which maintenance requests are handled internally within the, with, by the property managers and by Wayfinders, and it deals with the goal for prompt response to those requests. The third item deals with the Resident Services Coordinator, which would be 20, again, 20 to 30 hours between the two sites, and that would be split evenly, and it also contains a provision where the Residential Services Coordinator and the property management will meet on weekends after standard office hours based upon need and staff availability upon reasonable requests, reasonable requests of residents. This flexibility ensures that all residents will have convenient access to supportive services. This last paragraph is some, the last sentence is something that we discussed at the last meeting, and I was interested in making sure that there was more than a desire expressed in the management plan to do that, but a requirement that the team meet on weekends pursuant to reasonable requests. So the first item is, the first changes are staffing. Are there any questions from members of the Board or any comments from members of the Board regarding that? Mr. Slovater?
I would like to be very clear in what is being proposed. The, it's 20 to 30 hours. I'm not sure how that would be determined. And the 20 to 30 hours is a total between the two buildings, I believe.
That's correct.
It's not 20 to 30 hours at each building.
That's correct.
And will there be, I don't remember this from the plans, and I can't pull them up now. Will there be an office in each of the buildings that tenants can expect to find the management representative present?
I think so, but I think we need confirmation of that from somebody from Wayfinders.
Yes, and the, and the, and the hours will be posted on, outside the, outside the door, right?
So there will be, there will be an office of the manager or management company, and that office will either be open or if the manager is at the other property or neither property, that office will be locked, but the hours will be posted so that people will know when to expect them.
Yes, and there'll be a telephone number for them to call as well.
And what will determine whether it's 20 hours or 30 hours?
Mr. Gruber, just give us your name for the record.
Oh, it's James Gruber. I'm here representing Wayfinder, 1780 Main Street, Springfield, Mass. The, it, it'll be, I mean, it'll be based on, based on need. What, you know, if it, if it, if it needs, it's 20 to 30 hours is a range. If, you know, if it, if it may need a little bit, you know? So we're probably right, right in the middle there, you know, 25, 25 hours is, is, you know, seems reasonable. If we need, you know, people there more, then that's, you know, we will adjust just accordingly. But it's, it's a range to provide a little bit of flexibility.
But how, how will you know, are, are you going to establish regular hours?
Yes.
So how will you know if you need more hours? Will this be a response to some sort of historical demand from the previous weeks or months? Or how will you, how will you know that you'll need more hours and then implement those hours? Or how specifically will you split the hours between the two buildings? So that people, so the tenants will have a reasonable expectation of finding somebody in the office when they need them? For, for instance, I'm, I'm not giving you a schedule here, but will residents be, have a reasonable expectation that Monday mornings between nine and 12, they will find somebody in the office?
Um, yeah, and if, and if I could just have Amanda from the, Amanda Bubon admitted from the Wayfinders team?
There we go. Amanda, Ms. Bubon, please state your name.
Hi, Amanda Bubon from Wayfinders here, working out of the 1780 Main Street Springfield location. So just to answer some of those questions a little better, as I come from the property management side of Wayfinders, we kind of know when we need to adjust our hours or change them based on, but, you know, we'll post regular hours. It'll be set days and times that they can expect the manager to be at either site, whether it's the manager, the assistant manager, Resident Service Coordinator, the hours will be explicitly posted on the building doors. So we, we tend to learn over time. If more people are asking us to accommodate and meet them on a different day, you know, you learn your resident population over time. It starts at the beginning of screening. You start building those relationships with people and establishing those open lines of communication. So busier times of the year, certainly lease-up is going to be a busy time. So we're going to be there on the higher end of the, on the total hours. And when we first open, we like to be there a lot more often so that we're available and, and people get adjusted to living there and know, you know, where to go and what to do and things like that. Recertification times, we're gonna, you're gonna see an increase in the office hours because we're gonna need to be there more to meet with people more and have more time for processing paperwork. And again, even if the office is closed and it's not normal hours, there is the contact phone numbers for the site staff so that they can call them, they can email them, and ask for a meeting outside of those hours. And as, as time goes on, if we have a lot of tenants within a building that are, seem to be asking for this day or seem to be more available in the afternoon where maybe our hours are in the morning or something like that, then we adjust our scheduling to make sure that we can accommodate that.
Do you normally plan to staff the offices during what are normally considered business hours? Or do you also, or do you stagger them so that there are evening hours on a regular basis as well?
As a standard, on a, on a regular ongoing basis, it's normal business hours, like eight to 4:30, something like that. If it's going to be a full day, you know, we're, we're going to get to know the needs of the tenant population. And then, you know, office hours may change. We may find that being there, you know, two full days a week isn't sufficient. Maybe they need us there three half-days a week, or something like that. So, so we do our best to manage the schedule to accommodate what the needs are of the people living in the properties.
So, and what if they need five half-days a week?
I mean, we're going to have an assistant manager, we're going to have a property manager, and we're going to have a Resident Service Coordinator. So it's, it's not entirely impossible that there may be somebody available for a few hours every day of the week, if that's how we can work it out, if that's what the need really demands.
And are those three, those three positions that you just named, are, are they normally on-site? Or are they just available by phone at some other location?
No, they, they would have, they would each have set office hours at, at the buildings. So there would be a set normal time that the property manager, set days and times, the property manager is typically there. The assistant manager, when they're doing the office hours coverage, they would have their set schedule of what days and times they go to what properties, and the same thing with Resident Services.
And, I mean, three half-days a week is 12 hours.
Yeah, I mean, it was just an example. I wasn't being specific. It, it was just an example of how we would adjust to, you know, make sure that we're providing the full coverage, but that, that, the tenants may need us there more days, less hours, but for more days. And sometimes the tenants need us there for a whole day. You know, so we, you know, we just base it on what the demand really is, and then we adjust our schedules and our rotations and things like that.
And do you have any properties where your managers spend 40 hours a week on-site? I mean, you kind of, 20 to 30 number, I'm not sure where you get that number.
Uh, well, because our, our staff, or the way we have our staff administratively, that you don't have just one manager assigned to one property. They, they have groupings, portfolios of properties. So you wouldn't find that there would be one staff person that spends 40 hours a week in one office, no. But there, there may occasionally be times where there's 40 hours of coverage during a week at an office, but that coverage is split between all of the admin staff, not just one individual person.
Okay, well, thank you.
So just a couple of quick questions and comments. Number one, we took the 20 to 30 from, that was suggested number from, from the Wayfinders from our earlier meeting. That's where that comes from, number one. Number two, as I understand this, this says that the resident manager and the assistant manager all have the 20 to 30, will be on-site approximately 20 to 30 hours a week, and the Resident Service, the Service Counsel, so the RSC, will also be on. So you are likely to, you could have in that range of 20 to 30 hours, 40 hours of people on staff or 60 hours of people on staff. Is that a correct reading of what I see in the management plan?
Yeah, that would be correct.
Okay, and then lastly, in terms of weekends and non-business hours, the management plan, the amendment to the management plan that, that I see and that I'm supporting would require that you take more than best efforts, but you provide for non-normal business hours availability for reasonable requests. And so there would be beyond eight to five, and on weekends, the need to respond if you get requests from residents who are working and can't meet from nine to five, can only meet on weekends. And so that is a responsibility and a requirement of the, the management plan as I read it. Do you understand, do you agree with that?
Yes, that's correct, and, and we do that, we do that already at our other properties. So we wouldn't approach it any differently here. We would, we would do the same thing. And yeah, we have many working families. So it's, you know, you have to be willing to meet them after dinnertime sometimes, or on a Saturday or a Sunday, to handle any issues that they may have, or to, you know, do paperwork or recertifications, rent changes, you know, anything like that. So we do adjust our schedules if someone needs us to meet with them later in the evening or on the weekends.
Okay. All right. Ms. Williams, can you bring up the, the, the management plan? Again, we've got a, we've got a, there we go. Thank you. All right, so that, are there other questions regarding the section on staffing?
I, I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Meadows?
It, the way I'm reading this, it's 20 to 30 hours a week is both the property management and the maintenance staff. Is that correct?
That's how I read it.
And?
And it's, it's property management, maintenance staff, and the Resident Service Counselor. Each has 20 to 30 hours a week.
Not being used to that kind of initiative, it's, what, yeah, I've done a lot of work with public housing authorities and with buildings in New York City. The buildings in New York City all have superintendents that respond to maintenance issues on a 24-hour-a-day basis. The housing authorities have maintenance staff that respond. Whereas the property managers are a different category. They have regular hours. They, they deal with the issues that are necessary for property management. And I somehow look at this and find that 20 to 30 hours a week for the combination of the two is a little bit light. I don't see that, you know, if there are maintenance staff calls for stuffed-up toilets, for piping leaks, for heating issues, for cooling issues, other issues that deal with maintenance, and you include the hours that they're doing as the same number of hours or within the hours of the, the property manager, you, you could easily run far over 20 to 30 hours a week. And maybe you run your facilities in that basis. I just have never seen a facility that is run where both the ma, maintenance staff and the property management staff are combined for a certain number of hours. Could you explain?
They're not combined. It, it's not a combined thing. It's, it's 20 to 30 hours of administrative, so you have property manager, assistant manager, 20 to 30 hours of maintenance scheduled at the site, and then 20 or 30 hours of resident services scheduled at the site. So maintenance, there will be a maintenance technician. Sorry. There will be a maintenance technician scheduled at the site 20 to 30 hours a week during normal business hours. In addition to that, they're available 24/7, 365 days a year, should there be an emergency. So we schedule our maintenance technicians regularly on our properties for things like grounds cleanup, common area laundry room cleanings, any type of routine preventative maintenance, you know, keeping an eye on things to be available to handle any routine work orders that may be placed that aren't emergencies. And then in addition, we have them on-call 24/7 on a rotation. So there will always be somebody available to come at any day and time, but they will have, they will have set hours that they're going to be on-site as well, doing their work. That's separate from the hours that management is going to be staffing the offices, and it's also separate from the hours that the Resident Service is going to be available on-site.
Okay, that sounds better.
Ms. Williams, can you scroll down to the next page on the management plan? It goes into more detail on how they intend to cover requests.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Henry. Well, just a second, Mr. Henry. Mr. Meadows, are, are you done with your question, or do you have another question?
Only suggesting that 20 to 30 hours is, is a little bit light for maintenance.
Got it, okay. Mr. Henry?
I was going to piggyback off Mr. Meadows to say, and, and thank you, Ms. Bubon, for that clarification. Perhaps you should lay it out, just like you said just now, to me to separate so it doesn't seem as if it's 20 to 30 hours for everything.
Well, when I'm reading the, I think that's a good suggestion, Mr. Henry. When I, when I'm reading the plan here, I see one, the, on the first page of the management plan deals with the property manager, and that's laid out as 20, and assistant property manager, and that's laid out as 20 to 30 hours per week for that function. And the next paragraph says maintenance staff, they're also, they're supposed to have 20 to 30 hours for that function on-site, and then it goes through and says how they would respond to requests for services or responding to an emergency. And then, then following that, several paragraphs down later, it talks about the Resident Service Counselor and them having 20 to 30 hours to serve on-site between both places. So I read that as being three separate requirements. So I read that as being three separate requirements. One for manage, one for project management, one for maintenance, and one for, uh, services, all of which are between twenty and thirty hours. Therefore, we have between sixty and ninety hours of staff onsite per week in the, for the, the two properties together. Is that how you read this, Ms., Ms. Bubon?
Mr. Chair, yes, that's, 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 yes, that's, um, that, that's intentionally written that way so that it is split up into three separate functions for, um, three separate times for twenty to thirty hours a week for each individual of those three. So there'd be three people all with twenty to thirty hours a week.
Does that answer your, uh, your question, your concern, Mr. Henry, or is?
It, it does, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you. Um, if I may just ask one more question. So given Mr. Slovater's concern, as well as Mr. Meadows, Wayfinders, is this standard practice with, um, your existing management styles? I just want to, I, I know there's concerns that it seems a little bit light, but I just want to understand if this is common practice with your other properties.
Yeah, yes, this is how we, this is how we are structured, um, and how we're staffed. So it's the same for maintenance, it's the same for management, and, and the resident service coordinators. You know, the individual staff members will have their assigned properties, their set hours that they're expected to be at their properties. Again, sometimes schedules change and we move things around. Uh, if there's absences, we try to find someone that can cover those hours so that they're still maintaining the hours. Or we'll modify the schedule to make sure that we're still getting those hours in if something pulls us away or something like that. But this is our standard practice. Um, I can certainly appreciate the concern that it seems like it might be light on maintenance to have twenty to thirty hours of a tech there during normal business hours. But in practice, sometimes they spend a lot of time just waiting around at their sites. And, you know, because that's their regular scheduled time to be there, their grounds are clean, their common areas are clean. There's not any routine work orders hanging out there or emergencies. Um, so they're kind of just there, building relationships with the tenants, um, you know, and, and stuff like that. So it, it's been working for us so far, uh, and hopefully that continues in the future.
And I would add two things. One, if you find that that's not enough, and you get complaints from residents that they need more either services, management, or maintenance, they would go to you to request that. That's one way. And if it's not resolved by the management of, by Wayfinders, the tenants can file a complaint with, um, the town that they're not living up to the management plan that they have and that there's a need for additional time. Or that it's not being done. They don't have to describe a, a resolution and that through the, the residential rental program. So I think it seems to me that this is a good start. You've got a new building and not an old building, so there's hopefully not a lot of maintenance to do. But there's probably a lot of relationship building to, to have. And that you have to be responsive if they have, if there is a need for more time on the property. And if the, the residents are still not satisfied, they have another alternative to, um, complaining to you is that they can complain to the town. And so that, that would be my concern is that there's no way to rea- to address this, if this is the wrong amount of time. I think there is a way to address it later on, if we find that. I hope this is not the case, obviously, and I don't think it is, but if you're not doing a good enough job of maintenance, the town would hear about it, and the residents have the right to complain to the, to the town about that.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Ehrlich, you, you had your hand up, then Mr. Slovater, and then Mr. Gruber.
I'm Bruce Ehrlich, uh, Senior Vice President for Real Estate Development at Wayfinders, based at seventeen eighty Main Street, Springfield. Just a very minor clarification to, uh, the question that Mr. Henry asked. The twenty to thirty hours, we don't do tw- literally twenty to thirty at every property because we have properties as small as twelve units and as large as ninety-two units. So when we do a staff allocation for a property, and this one in particular, it's really based on the number of units that staff can cover, you know, property managers, how many property management staff or FTE are required for a project of certain size. So, so in fact, each project has a slightly different staffing, but it's a staffing ratio. I think that is consistent, and that staffing ratio that we are, uh, proposing here is the staffing ratio that we use across our portfolio, which is twenty-three other properties with over eight hundred units. So just wanted to make sure that we're talking about, we have a, we're providing a consistent staffing ratio. But that's, it's not identical in, uh, the absolute numbers, not identical to other projects. That's all.
Mr. Slovater?
Well, as I continue to listen to all of this, one of my concerns is that it seems that Pathfinders is treating these two separate buildings as one complex. That it is twenty to thirty hours of various services, including maintenance, which is one of the things I'm more concerned about, between the two buildings. So twenty to thirty hours for two buildings is ten to fifteen hours per building for a week, which could be two to three hours a day. And buildings of this size, between all the, the cleaning and maintenance and light bulb changing and clogged whatevers, two to three hours a day for buildings of this size strikes me, as it seemed to have struck Mr. Meadows, as light in the amount of attention that you are committing to. Is, do you have other situations where you have two buildings that are separated by, I would guess, about a ten-minute walk? I- in this kind of configuration? Because this, you, you have, your application is for two different buildings, both of which are, one is all new construction, one is part, is mostly new construction. Do you have another setup like this?
Yes, actually, we do. In Holyoke, we have the Library Commons property, which has a building on Chestnut Street and a building on Elm Street. Again, similar construction where there's some existing, you know, kind of rehab new construction work and then brand new construction. And it's, it's, it is the same way. It's two buildings, but it's one property. At the end of the day, this might be two separate buildings, but this is one property with one budget. So it's, it's not like there's a separate budget and a separate funding, uh, setup and sources of income for each separate building to be able to treat them truly separate. We have to treat them as one property because it is one property. Uh, but do, we do have that.
Are you talking about Amherst or Holyoke now?
No, I, I'm talking about both, really. There, there, it's the same, it's the same situation where there's two separate buildings, two separate locations, but it's the same, it's the same property. We have another property in Springfield that's the same way as well, where there's buildings on this, in this street, and then there's building over here on this street. But they're both one property with one budget, one set of staff coverage. You know, and I, I understand the concern, um, and I'll just reiterate again, it's, it's worked for us thus far. You know, especially because we are accommodating. We like to meet our tenants where they are and meet the needs that they have. So if we find that it's not enough, it may not be because the tenants feel like it's not enough. It may be our maintenance staff saying, hey, I need more hours scheduled here. It's not enough for me to get everything done. Or the, the property manager may say, I need more hours here. Um, and we have to, you know, adjust and, and pivot our direction and, and change our schedules to accommodate for that. Um, and coming out of construction or even out of rehab, the, the routine maintenance is usually pretty light. We're, we're really good about education with our tenants. We provide them with information at move-in for energy efficiency and what kind of cleaning products they can use on the materials that we've bought, how to properly use the stuff in their apartment, whether it be mini splits, ther- thermostats, like, you know, we, we do a lot of educating with the tenants. Uh, and some of that's heavy with maintenance in the beginning. Like, we just opened, uh, the property in Agalom, and our maintenance staff is, you know, going into apartments to teach people how to use these new energy efficient stoves because they've, they don't know how to use them, they think they're broken, but they're really not. So we're definitely very open and accommodating in that way. But yeah, we, we do have other properties that have multiple buildings that are part of one property with one budget, one set of staffing that we split between the two buildings on, on the, for the development.
Go ahead, Mr. Slovater, if you have another question.
No, I've finished. I was just thanking her for her information.
So I want to ask Mr. Moore a question. So my con- my concern is twofold. Number one, I have to respect the fact that you have some experience with this and the numbers, the, and number of hours that you think you need presently to maintain the property, to run the property, or what you, uh, what you represented to us and what we put into the, what we agreed to put into the management plan. But if that is insufficient, is there a way for the tenants to, um, complain to the town and will, is there a way for the town to make an adjustment and require, um, additional services either for maintenance or for other things on property, uh, through a complaint process? So, Mr. Moore, is there a way for tenants, if they don't get satisfaction from the management, to go to the town and ask for additional, uh, services or maintenance property on the property?
So, you know, we are available for complaint, uh, response, and we, we often deal with issues like this. You know, the maintenance side of things is pretty, is more straightforward because a tenant can, can call us at any time, conduct an inspection, and if there's maintenance needs of, of a dwelling unit, then the, um, you know, the, the owner's obligated to respond to that, and, and we, we get in touch with them and have them do that. We do get involved with, you know, other, uh, property manager related duties, you know, making sure they're available and tenants are getting the services that they need. But we're not really in a position to say, you know, you need to add five more hours here. It's really, you know, that complaint is dealt with and responded to, and we contact property management and ask them to find a resolution and work towards a solution, and it, it typically works out that way.
Any other comments, questions, concerns about staffing? Move on to the next subject, which is the tra- trash recycling, there was no change to that. Parking, um, the one change on the management plan is that the guests at East Street will have to park on the street, on-street parking, and at Beltratown, guests will require to use two spaces that they were, that are designated for short term. And it says vehicle registration at both sites, and there's registering the cars at both, at both sites registered the cars. Don't have them describe in the management plan what type of, um, system you're going to use to know whether the cars are, are correct there or not. But that's, that is something that you're going to have to come up with, whether you use tags or stickers or whatever. But you'll need to do something. Uh, the plan here tells me that you will need to have a, um, some kind of a a plan to know when people are parked, which, when our, um, acceptable or registered cars are on the property. So questions regarding parking from members of the board? There's no change in lighting, there's no change in signage, there's no change in landscape maintenance or snow removal onsite facilities or outdoor mechanical or HVAC equipment. Nothing on material equipment in large household good storage. There is significant new language on marketing and tenant selection. This comes from the last meeting where there was, uh, concerns raised to make sure that the marketing of the, um, property was, uh, aggressive and outreach to, um, all, across the board, to all types of people. Um, and that viewing hours would be available and other kinds of questions that were raised at the last, um, last meeting on this. Uh, like this, so this, if there are questions, do you, do people have questions about this? Or will it be, would it be valuable for, do the board members wish for the applicant to run through the marketing and tenant selection process again? Okay. Seems to me that the, what they've outlined here are pretty consistent with what they have spoken about in the past. And if there is any questions about it, members can raise those questions. Uh, lastly is residence safety. This talks about reviewing and, um, reviewing the standard leases, going off, going through with residents their responsibilities as well as the, as the responsibilities of a landlord. Again, it goes through a bit about the, um, talks about, and it's consistent with earlier, um, repair requests. Emergency repair requests are answered by a twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week emergency service. I'm assuming, I have a question, one question quickly for that. That twenty-four hour call service, answering service, if they get a, you know, busted pipe in, uh, at three in the morning, and they're calling an answering service, that answering service just doesn't sit there until eight or nine o'clock in the morning to refer it. Somebody's woken up in the middle of the night, and on an emergency basis, if it's an emergency, they're responding within as quickly as they can get there. Is that correct? Ms. Bubon or Mr. Gruber?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. Um, the, the on-call procedure protocol, our on-call service, um, has live call center twenty-four seven, so when they call in, they're, they're getting to a live person to talk to. If it's an emergency, uh, the protocol is, um, we send them the rotation on a regular basis so they know who's on call for what properties. And they have a first person on call, which is a maintenance technician. There's typically a second maintenance technician as a backup in case the first one doesn't answer. And then if the second maintenance person doesn't answer, then an admin gets called, which would be the assistant or the property manager. From there, they also have contact information for the regional property managers and the senior vice president, uh, and even myself. So someone's getting woken up. Uh, they go through the chain and they call repeatedly all of the people that they can until someone answers the phone to be able to dispatch the message.
And that person then is, the person to dispatch the message is the person that gets the plumber out there in this situation of a broken pipe, is that correct?
Correct, yep. Yeah, it goes the same for lockouts too. Like, if it's a lockout in the middle of the night, it's the same procedure and protocol because that's an emergency as well. So anything that's considered emergency, if it has to do with life safety, if it has to do with electricity, heat, cool, um, heat, hot water, the, you know, any kind of leaks, fires, uh, alarms going off at random or s- something like that. There, there's quite a bit of things that we consider emergency. So, uh, yeah, they would continue to call until someone answered the phone and they gave them the message. And then the issue would be resolved, whether through a contractor, for calling out a plumber, electrician, uh, or we get a maintenance person out there right away, or, or sometimes we administratively go, you know, to see what, what's going on. And depending upon the severity of what the emergency is, we may have admin, property managers or regionals onsite too.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
On the screen that's been shared, there's a sentence that says alcohol consumption and drug use in public areas are strictly for him, forbidden, as is the possession of illegal substance. Does that mean marijuana as well? Is, is that drug use factory marijuana?
Yes, it does. There's federal funds. It's illegal federally. We, we have no smoking, period, you know, on the properties or non-smoking properties across our portfolio. So they can't be doing that. And, and yes, the alcohol is also not, you know, they can't be sitting around outside drinking alcohol in the, in the common grounds, or if they reserve, if there's community space at a property and they reserve that community space for a private dinner or birthday party, they're not allowed to bring, um, alcohol and, and that sort of thing into our community space either for consumption. Like, they have to do that in their apartment.
I think you may, if I may suggest you add in, um, alcohol consumption and drug use. Alcohol consumption and drug use including marijuana um to that language, because some people will say, hey, it's Massachusetts marijuana is legal.
We'll definitely take that under advisement. I thi- I think our latest one actually did specify, so yeah. We even put in our garden rules where we have community gardens. So some of our properties have green space and there's raised garden beds and, you know, if we're capable of. We provide them an opportunity to have gardening space and, and yeah, that's in our, that's in our gardening rules as well, that they're not allowed to grow. Marijuana in their space if they're using it, so.
Alright.
And if, if I may, did you just say that your, the entire property is a non-smoking property?
Yes.
Even outside?
Yep.
Even inside?
Yes, absolutely. No smoking, no smoking. They're not allowed to have incense burning. Uh, and we also don't allow open flame candles in our rules.
Wow, so does that mean, does that mean that in the application process you? You check if people are smokers and smokers cannot actually rent in your buildings?
No, that's not the case.
Or not some, how do you enforce non-smoking inside someone's unit? Not that I object to you enforcing it, I'm more curious than anything.
So at move-in, all tenants sign a non-smoking lease addendum. That expressly prohibits smoking in the, in the buildings, in their units, in the common areas and on the property in general. Uh, and when we find evidence that they're smoking, um, they get lease violations and they may get taken to court for that eventually if they don't comply.
Wow, okay, thanks.
So you have to remember too that HUD is uh, HUD, HUD has a mandate for a smoke-free. Um, public affordable housing, so um, you know, we can't, we're, we're pretty serious about that.
So smokers have to go out to the street?
Yes, yep.
Alright.
Sometimes it's a long walk, but.
Then that way they're getting their exercise.
Yeah. They could get their steps in.
Mr. Henry?
Oh, I'm sorry, my hand is still up. I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, we've noted your suggestion and we'll make sure that we have a vote on that when we. Uh, consider the management plan. Any other questions regarding um? Standard lease and residence safety before we get to security? Alright, on security, this is a new section, um, which is really. In response to, I mean, I, I remember I mentioned that I did not see the word security in the management plan and this is a. I think something that has been worked on between the staff and the applicant regarding security. So it outlines um that you have a lot, 24-hour lot building with key cards. Members are instructed as to how to operate that. How to deal with not, how to call 9/11 and then it requires a um. Security camera system which will be installed to monitor the site and buildings. Security cameras will be installed in an arrangement and configuration. To provide coverage of indoor and outdoor common areas, including but not limited to entrances, building access points. Common hallways and lobbies, dumpster locations and parking and driveway areas. I think it purposely does not detail in, it does not give great detail as to what areas of the. The actual placement of the cameras. Uh, I think that's probably something that's prudent. Not to have a public document that shows where cameras are actually placed and where there may be blind spots, but um. It seems to indicate that you are going to establish a, a, a camera system on property that will have a. Pretty broad coverage of the property in the building, including interior areas as well. The one question I have is do you keep a record? Will this, will the recordings be kept for 24 hours, 48 hours a week? How is that? How do you contemplate storage of the security camera data?
Um, it, the, the standard systems that we use typically holds maybe about 30 days worth at a time, I would say. It, uh, it's, yeah, we ha- we can go back at least several weeks, usually at least 30 days, sometimes longer. If it's not a super heavy active uh location or something, like if it's not constantly having recorded footage. Um. But uh, yeah, we, it, usually they're about 30 days at least. The majority of the systems that we have, even some of the older systems at some of our older sites um hold about 30 days worth of data.
So it satisfies my concern, which is if somebody comes back to their apartment or after being gone for the weekend and notices there's been a break-in. You would have um. A couple of days worth of, at least a couple of days worth of film to see who might have walked past or broken into that. Um, into that unit, okay?
Yep.
Other questions regarding or comments regarding security, the securities uh area? Mr. Slavert?
I just wanted to clarify that a decision has been made. The, at the last meeting, I believe, I raised the question of what kind of, of access. System to limit access to residents only would be used. And Mr. Gruber was not sure about what was being used in other properties and which system, so have you? It says here the key cards. You're, you're, you've decided you're going to use a key card system for these buildings. Is that correct?
Mr. Gruber?
Yes. And, correct.
Okay, and will, will every occupant of a unit get a key card? Young kids who coming home from school, adults, so if there are five people living in a unit, will that unit have five key cards?
Um, as a standard practice, we issue a key card to every household member that's 18 or older. Um, just in general, when we issue keys, you know, if they're over 18, they're going to get unit key, they're going to get a key fob. Um, and everything separately. Um, I think in terms of if. It, that's kind of hard because they're responsible for their children at all times, so if their children are coming and going as they please from the building. They may end up in a situation where their child has done something and they weren't supervising their child. Um, but it's certainly something that we would consider. If we had a family that, you know, the, the parent in the household or the guardian in the household is, is working and the, the children need to be let into the building and. And that sort of thing that, you know, we may be willing to issue additional cards or, or fobs for the children, uh, but they would have to come and talk to us about that.
But nor- normally it was.
Normally it's 18 and older.
And when you're referring to a fob, is that the key card you're talking about? Cause the fob, usually you hold up in front of something and it trips something. It's not, it's not a card that you would insert into a slot. It's a.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
You hold in front of, of something.
Yeah, you just kind of wave it, you know, put it up to it and it'll, yeah.
And how do residents let visitors into the building? There's a note, there's a mention in here. Of uh ring, that residents, oh, where was it? I'm want to.
Yeah, there's, there's about, an intercom system is provided. It's, it's the second sentence of the.
Right.
Same paragraph there, yep.
Right, and so do they, do they buzz, do they push a button and release the door? How does, how does a visitor get into the building?
Yeah, so they would, depending on the exact system, I, I don't have the specifics uh on hand. Um, but we have two, two systems really. There's systems where they buzz and there's a panel in the unit and they hit the door button and unlocks the door. Um, and then the newer systems usually are attached to like their phone number. So it will ring to their phone and then they push a button on the phone and then it unlocks the door. So um, that's how they would give the access.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yep.
Any, uh, we've, we've gone through the management plan, um, but. This, we certainly have an opportunity for members of the board to make any comments regarding the plan or any items of the plan. Then I would open it up to public comment and then we could vote on accept, on including this management plan as part of the comprehensive permit. And we'll deal with Mr. Henry's amendment on marijuana at that time. So is there any questions, comments from board members regarding the management plan? Any changes you'd like to propose? Mr. White?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my only more question, um, and no issues with everything going forward, but would relate to what Mr. Henry was discussing. Um, with that amendment, I would just ask that, cause I don't know what word is actually used in Massachusetts stat- statute, whether it's cannabis or marijuana. To, that would be my only recommendation would be, would we use the concurrent language that's used in the legislation in Massachusetts?
Got it. Good catch.
I think it is, I think it is marijuana, um, because the statute says possession of um. Illegal drugs, not including marijuana. When the law was passed, they changed some of the jury instructions to make sure it was cleared as to marijuana.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Henry. Alright, if there's no further questions or comments at this point, um, we've opened it up for public comment. We've not had, the public has not had comments on. Uh, we've not had any public comments on this map, on any of this comprehensive permit. If there are public comments regarding this particular section, the management plan, I would entertain them now. If you wish to comment. Please raise your, either raise a hand on the uh, on your Zoom app or press star nine on your phone. And Ms. Williams, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to comment?
No, we do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, if there's no public comments on this section, I would move to um. I would entertain a motion to, uh, Ms. Fryman, yes?
Thank you. Uh, just want to remind everyone that uh, this plan has to go before the subsidizing agency for approval. Um, we don't know what, if they'll have any comments or anything, but to the extent that they might have some comments, we just need to make sure that we. You know, that that's understood, that this is still subject to their review.
No, I, I'm, I'm aware that the subsidizing agency has.
We can, yeah, and we can tell, you know, uh, let the DVA know if there's any edits to this made by the state.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the management plan with the amendment as proposed by Mr. Henry to add the words. Or marijuana, including marijuana. Um, to the section on, I guess it's personal responsibility or, or lease and residence safety.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion regarding the motion? If not, the vote occurs on adopting the management plan as amended. The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Slavert?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Alright, the message, the amendment passes five to nothing, I mean, the motion passes five to nothing. The management plan is approved. The next item is uh, changes to the waivers. Um, and Ms. Williams, can you put up the two? We'll first deal with the waivers for uh 70 Belcher Town Road. Let's deal with those first. When we last met, uh, there were two items for each, two waivers in question for each property. Um, and there at the very end, if we could scroll down through, and we had approved all the waivers, tentatively approved all the waivers. Except for the last two. And uh, can you scroll down to those? There we go. So uh, 24 and 25 deals with the Department of Public Works. Originally, um, the town and I had thought we should have a permit issued by the Department of Public Works. The applicant requested that there not be a separate permit from the Department of Public Works for water and sewer connections. The, the applicant and the town have met and discussed a way in which there would be. Which the Public Works Department would re, would um. Approve. The sewer connect, would see the design of the sewer connection. Um, receive that design, approve that design and ensure that the design and the actual. Um, construction of the water and sewer connection conform with the Town of Amherst Sewer Use Regulations. They would not be exempt from permit fees. They would not be exempt from anything else, but they wouldn't. Have to apply for a separate permit in order to attach for the water and sewer. I think that's the, that is the uh gist of the two, two waiver requirements. I'm going to ask Ms. Maloney, who had, or Murray, excuse me, Ms. Murray, who had worked with the town and with the applicant on this to. Further describe what is here as a, as a solution to the um disagreement we had at the last meeting. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If, if you remember at our last meeting in uh November, um. There was still perhaps some discussion about getting input from the Department of Public Works. While the comprehensive permit is still being discussed by the town, so that their input could be incorporated into this decision. Of course, we are, you know, now at the very end of this whole comprehensive permit process and um. By its very nature, we, we don't have, nor should we be expected to have. Construction-grade uh plans that would be used or for um a water or sewer connection permit. So we've revised this language to make it clear that the comprehensive permit. As is authorized in chapter 40B, acts as both the water and the sewer permit. But the applicant still has to provide those constructional level detailed plans to the Department of Public Works. Prior to the issuance of a water and sewer permit and the DPW has to, has to confirm in writing. That they meet those um, our local requirements. And the uh version of the waiver um that is being screen shared. Um, has been amended only to add a clarification that as you said, Mr. Chair. That this is a waiver of the permitting process only. It is not a waiver of any fees. So the applicant was agreeable to adding a sentence at the end of both uh 24 and 25. To be clear that this shall not constitute a waiver of any associated fees for those permits. And then when we get to conditions for the uh discussion of the conditions. You'll see that we've made a similar revision there so that the waivers and the conditions are consistent into how this is to be handled.
And I understand the town is satisfied with that this uh provides the information they need and the certainty of the, of the. Water sewer connections will comport with town regulations. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. There's been quite a bit of back and forth with town staff and the applicant over these, yes.
Alright.
And if I may add just one other change since um our meeting back in November. Uh, the board members may recall that the very last waiver um that was originally requested. Was what we refer to as a blanket waiver, you know, meaning if there's any waiver we forgot to ask for, it's deemed granted. I'm paraphrasing obviously. Uh, the applicant did withdraw that waiver request, so it's gone from both. Uh, the document before you're on Belcher Town Road as well as the Southeast Street site.
That's great, thank you, that's right. Questions from board members regarding this?
Does this, does this waiver? Prevent the DPH from doing any form of inspection?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions, comments? We have a similar uh waiver request for the, this was Belcher Town Road. We also have a similar waiver request for Southeast Street. We also have a similar waiver request for Southeast Street. It's essentially the same language and the same issue, is it not, Attorney Murray?
Yes, it is.
And again, this does not have the, um, sort of the catch-all waiver as well.
Correct, so number twenty-seven and twenty-eight, uh, will both be amended to add a sentence to clarify that, uh, the grant of this waiver does not waive permit fees that are associated with the water or the sewer permits, and the final blanket waiver has been eliminated.
Okay. So we can discuss both, uh, the, these two identical waivers for both properties at this time. Is there any discussion, questions or comments from board members? If not, um, we can open it up to public comment, if there's any public comment on this section. So if you wish, if the public wishes to comment on it, please so indicate by raising your hand on Zoom or pressing star nine on the phone. We'll give you just a minute. Ms. Williams, you'll tell me if anybody does raise their hand or so indicate that they wish to speak.
There is no one here from the public wishing to speak.
Kido. As a result, if there's no other questions or comments from either the applicant or the board members, I would entertain a motion that we approve the waivers, uh, all waivers as before us. We'd approved, tentatively approved all the waivers except for these two, the last meeting. I would now entertain a motion to approve all the waivers, including these last two. So all waivers as amended, um, for both the Southeast Street and the Belcher Town Road properties. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
It's moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion to approve the waivers as amended? If there's no discussion, the vote occurs on the motion. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Alright, we've approved the waiver, the motion carries, it's five to nothing, we've approved the waivers. The next order of business is dealing with, uh, updates to the conditions. When we last met, I think there were about fif, we had approved the vast majority of conditions and they have remained unchanged or have only, um, grammatical changes to the vast majority of conditions that were originally proposed, and you can find that in the, um, draft decision document. There were about fifteen, sixteen, something like that, uh, conditions that, um, were left in, for lack of a better term, in dispute. And we asked for the staff and the applicant, as well as for me, to be involved in trying to resolve those, uh, differences or just confusions regarding conditions. So I, if we can pull up the conditions, what I'd like to do is just highlight, uh, focus on those conditions that have changed from the last time we met. And so there's, uh, in, in essence, I'd like to focus on those fifteen or sixteen, uh, that were in, um, some form of conversation when we last met. So the first item is, the first change is just laying out in tabular form the different, um, mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments in each of the two buildings. Not some, and so if you had, if, what I'll do is go through these changes. If you have a question about any of them, we'll discuss it at the time when we're going through them. We don't have to wait till the end to discuss them. So I don't think that, this is not controversial, it's just more clear than in, um, you know, paragraph form, it's just easier to understand. Alright, let's scroll to the next one, Ms. Williams, okay? The next one is the, um, local preference. The applicant has agreed to a seventy percent local preference for the first lease-up of these properties. It has to be approved by the EOL, EOHLC, that's the Housing Agency of the State. But that is the, the language that provides for the local preference. I guess the one question I have is, down below, there's total number of applicants' preferences, total number of local preferences. What are those? Are those something that has to be filled in, Ms. Williams, or is that, or Ms., Ms. Murray? Those last five, um, items under the, in the second paragraph. Is that to provide information to the town?
It, yes, Mr. Chair, this was actually something that, as I understand, is fairly standard language that the town uses in other, uh, similar permits. I think this was actually added by, uh, Mr. Malloy. But those, the list as to the total number of applicants and the total number of local preference applicants, et cetera, that would just be data that the applicant would provide to the town, um, you know, following the, the lottery and selection process.
So after lease-up, this would be provided?
Yes.
Are there any questions about local preference, seventy percent, or the provision of information to the town after lease-up? Alright. Let's move on to the next one. This is, this, this next one deals, um, it relates to the waivers that we've dealt with previously, if I'm, if I'm correct. Uh, this serves as a master permit and water and sewer connection permit. So this, this, um, i- is consistent with the previous waiver, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. Alright, any questions, if not, we'll move on. This language is site improvement. Can you explain this language, Ms., uh, Attorney Murray?
Certainly, so, uh, as I mentioned, under the waivers, the applicant agreed to withdraw that blanket waiver request. In exchange for that, or as a substitute for that, the applicant had requested the language that you see here that is highlighted, that says that to the extent that the project plans as approved by the board under this decision vary from any bylaw regulations or local rule not listed in Exhibit C, which are or will become, um, the, where the approved waiver list will be inserted, the approved plans will prevail. So this goes to the issue of, we might approve something on the plans as part of, um, you know, an overall approval of the project. And unbeknownst to any one of us, there might be some, something shown on the plan that doesn't quite comply with some local rule that just wasn't immediately obvious or wasn't included in the waivers. But by virtue of the board approving the project and approving the plans as presented, those minor deviations, if you will, um, will, as shown on the plan, will be what govern the building commissioner as he, um, you know, reviews plans and issues occupancy permits for the project.
Normally, something like this is, is, um, something I would defer to town staff. If they are comfortable with this, they've reviewed the plans extensively. And do they think that it's, and I would not support a blanket waiver. This provides, um, some waiver, but only for things that we didn't catch in effect. Mr. Mora, is this something that the town is comfortable with?
It, it is, it's something we've discussed in detail along with our, our thorough review of the plans, and we're comfortable with the condition.
Okay. Alright. Any comments or questions? I think it's an improvement from the blanket waiver. Distinct improvement. Okay, let's go to the, let's keep on moving. Now, oops, there we go. Number twenty-nine. This is new, uh, construction, this adds, the construction entrance of Crush Stone shall be provided at each site as shown on the approved project plan. The entrance shall be maintained in a condition which shall prevent tracking or flowing of sediment to the public right-of-way adjacent streets, shall be swept as needed to remove the sediment and debris. The first question I have on this is, is the Crush Stone already on the approved project plan? Or sh, or is this something that's come up since the, that's not on the project plan? And we should amend this by saying, um, a construction entrance of Crush Stone shall be provided at each site and shown, and, and shown on the approved project plan. So I, I guess what I'd like to do is make sure that it's inadvertently, it's not on the approved project plan that the nature of the condition is met by the, by having Crush Stone required. Does this need to be amended to accomplish that, Attorney Murray?
I, I think it would be wise, Mr. Chair, I know earlier today, uh, we hadn't pulled up the plans to actually confirm that the Crush Stone is shown on the plans. I don't know if anyone from Wayfinders is in a position to confirm that at this moment, but I think if we change, as shown on the approved plans to, which shall be shown on the approved plans or and shall be shown on the approved plans, uh, we, we accomplish the same purpose.
Which is better than and, I think, which should.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the language is more precise. Uh, Mr. Gruber, you have your hands up.
Yeah, it's shown on the plan. And, uh, in one of the details, um, for the construction entrance detail, it's shown on the plans and then there's a detail that, um, specifies it a little bit more.
Doesn't hurt to have it, oh, have the word which shall, but you don't oppose that, it's, it's already there, right? Got it, okay. We'll deal with that amendment to this, um, condition at the end. Any can, discussion, concern, questions? Alright, let's move to the next condition.
Mr. Chair, I think the building commissioner has a comment.
Oh, Mr. Mora, I didn't see your hand, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I was just gonna add that, um, you know, an item like that is typically part of the construction logistics plan as well that we work out and finalize through the pre-construction meeting process prior to work starting and mobilizing to the site. Uh, so I just wanted you to know that there are other details like that, you know, that's a, a, a dust and sediment control and, and other safety items during construction activity that are, uh, worked out in detail with my office as well as Public Works and Public Safety Departments.
Thank you. Number thirty-eight. Number thirty-eight requires a, a posting of a sure, surety bond during the construction for the, to cover the costs of such impacts to public property, pub, town-owned property, which this remains town-owned property, um, even though the project, uh, will be, the property will be leased to the project. And it's a building requirement, the building commissioner can require a surety bond. This is typically, I think this is frequently what the town has done with large projects and a surety bond protects the interest of the town.
Correct, Mr. Chair, and actually that, um, was inserted at the request of the town. And, um, I know at our last meeting, there was some question from the developers who, whether they were open to this, and they have confirmed that they are comfortable providing such a bond.
Alright, any other questions, comments? We'll move to number forty. Guess this is just saying that Mr. Mora cannot be unreasonable in providing a temporary certificate of occupancy, um.
And I think also, Mr. Chair, again, going back to our November meeting, uh, language that was originally in here had talked about, uh, when it's, when the project is deemed substantially complete by an architect and, uh, the board, uh, in my opinion, rightfully balked at that and the authority of the building commissioner. So now it is all back to, um, the building commissioner and, um, application of the Safe Building Code. And then similarly, number forty-one, just further elaborating, forty deals with a temporary certificate of occupancy. Forty-one, um, amplifies a few items that have to be addressed in order for the final certificate of occupancy to be issued. Again, the applicant has agreed to all of this and, um, it's my understanding that this is all satisfactory to staff as well.
Alright, unless there's no comments or questions from board members, we'll move on to the next. Next is parking. This deals with the question of whether, it's the extent to which there can be parking, on-street parking for the Southeast Street site. And this attempts to, uh, provide that the town will explore a plan to provide permits for, uh, on-street parking. But if, if it can't be done, and that the applicant will be cooperative in trying to find, um, a, a way to provide on-street parking. But it would not be a breach of the comprehensive permit if the town does not provide for, um, on-street parking permit program for residents of the building. I think that is a clumsy way of describing that condition. Alright, and we don't have a, we don't have a status report on that, on those, uh, discussions with the town and it's probably not going to be for a while and certainly until after construction of the property as well as the, um, work being done on Southeast Street and the school. Let's move on to number fifty-two.
Would you like me to address this one, Mr. Chair?
Yep, please, that, that's one that we talked about this morning.
Thank you, so, um, earlier this week, uh, Nate Mora had suggested that number fifty-two be modified to, uh, reflect that the wayfaring signs, as shown on the approved plans, um, will be at appropriate locations, et cetera. The applicant then pointed out that the wayfaring signs are not yet shown on any of the approved plans, that they are, uh, you know, something that will come as the property is ultimately developed. But the applicant has also advised that any wayfaring signs that they intend to install, um, would be zoning compliant. And with that being the case, it seems as though number fifty-two is actually unnecessary because we're not granting any kind of exception. It was simply a restatement that the applicant's wayfaring signs shall comply with the zoning bylaws, which is exactly what we would expect of them. So depending on, uh, the preference of the board, I would agree that number fifty-two could be deleted.
They can't put up wayfaring signs that aren't compliant, so it seems to me there's no need to have the condition. So it can be deleted. Okay?
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next condition, um, with, that has been changed. Alright, these are the, these go to implement some of the management, management, um, plan provisions regarding staff time on-site. And so this seeks to mirror what was in the management plan. So it reads that in accordance with the approved management plan, part-time staff shall be on-site for approximately twenty to thirty hours per week, covering both locations within the development during posted business hours, displayed in the lobby on or near the management office door in the building. A twenty-four hour a day, seven-day-a-week emergency answering service shall be available for tenants and emergency complaints by the public as set forth in the management plan. In addition, applicants shall provide a resident service coordinator on-site approximately twenty to thirty hours per week to address tenant needs at both sites of the development. The property management team and the residential services coordinator shall make reasonable accommodations to meet with tenants requiring services on weekends or outside of regular business hours and shall ensure that tenants are advised of such services. So some of the questions that we raised regarding the management plan about posted hours, requirement for, um, notice to tenants that they are, that, um, non-normal business hours availability is something that they can expect is, is provided for in number sixty-eight.
If I could jump in here too, Mr. Chair, um as um Attorney Fryman advised when we were talking about uh the management plan itself, um it is subject to uh the review and approval of the subsidizing agency who may request changes. Um, so I think it would be prudent if we do add some language in number sixty-eight to acknowledge that um the approved management plan, if we say just after, in accordance with the approved management plan as approved by the subsidizing agency and we can continue on with the rest of it. Um, just to acknowledge that th- there could be some sort of minor change that comes with this. Um, and and one other thing earlier today, um, Chair, I know you and I had discussed at some length um the residential rental property bylaw and the procedure.
Right.
That is available. Um, I don't know if the discussion under the management plan and and your, in particular, your questions to Mr. Mora um sort of satisfy that the process is certainly available to residents, including residents of these properties, or if you feel the need to um reference that bylaw here.
Well, I I thought we probably wanted to reference that bylaw in number sixty-nine.
Okay.
Uh, as opposed to here, I think number sixty-nine talks about the residential rental permit. And my thought was that that in in sixty-nine that we require that um the residents are informed by the by the landlord, project manager, that they have a right to complain through the residential rental permit system. So if we can, we, so let's first deal with sixty-eight, if there's any questions about that, I think prudent a suggestion by Attorney Murray for, as approved by the subsidizing subsidizing agency. I mean, we just have to live with that. That's what is um required by state law. But then in sixty-nine, I'd like to add a sentence that requires notice to the residents that they have the ability to um issue a, to file a complaint through the residential rental permit process.
And I guess while Jacenta is furiously typing, I would just ask whether um Attorney Fryman or if anybody has any particular issue with that addition.
You know, Mr. Mora has his hand up and then Ms. Fryman, Mr. Mora. Did you have, did you want to add something to this?
I don't, I don't have an issue with that particular addition, just that the the condition sixty-nine that's shown here is not the most current condition language that was worked on between uh staff, Wayfinders, and I believe both attorneys have reviewed it as well.
It is not the most
Thank you. No, I think actually.
I'm dropping it in now.
Thank you, Jacenta. I was gonna say it's on the left side of the screen.
All right, so now I'm, let's make sure we have, what is the most recent discussion between the applicant and the town?
It's this one.
So it's number six?
I, you know what, I'll just fix it. One second. That way it's clean and it's not confusing if everyone's okay with this. Except it keeps calling it six and not sixty-nine.
Yeah, what's the difference between this and what we were reading? Is there anything substantive?
It it is similar to, as you, as we had discussed earlier today, that um uh, one thing that has changed is that after the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued, um, the applicant does anticipate that they will start leasing out units. Uh, in which case they will have some data that they can provide to the town um upon issuance of the temporary CVO and adding language also that I believe within six months, um, they would update that information to the building commissioner.
And Ms. Fryman, you're comfortable with this? Attorney Fryman?
Yeah, we we agreed to though.
All right. Any questions regarding this or regarding the right to, the notification of a right to file complaints through the residential rental bylaw? Okay, let's go on. Go ahead, you can finish that up, Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, go ahead and finish it before we move on.
It's done, it's done.
Cool. All right, number seventy is a security system shall be installed in accordance with the management plan.
Mr. Meadows has his hand up.
Oh, Mr. Meadows, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, sixty-nine deals with the twenty to thirty hours of the management and the twenty to thirty hours for the residential resident. Uh, but there's nothing in here about maintenance that I can see.
I think you're right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think it might make sense just to add a sentence into number sixty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Um, because in s- we talk about parts-time staff, twenty to thirty hours per week. Um, but I think we could identify that as the project manager.
Or assistant manager.
Assistant and also maintenance, because then that will fit in with the twenty-four-hour, seven-day-week answering service. And then we obviously mentioned the resident services coordinator uh towards the end, so we can certainly add uh the project manager and assistant manager and maintenance shall be on-site twenty to thirty hours per week.
Let's each, the gem, yes, each.
Yes.
So separately, you have three requirements, project manager and assistant project manager, maintenance and resident service counselor. We have three separate requirements. So we should mirror what's the language in the um management plan. I think that's what you mean, right, Mr. Meadows?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the goal here is to mirror the language in the management plan. And we can make sure that staff has the ability to make any technical and conforming changes so that that can be done. All right. There's no objections, I think. Was there any objections or any comments regarding the security system? All right. Let's move on. We have seventy and I think that's, there's, is there one after that, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, seventy-one and seventy-two. Oh, um, Mr. Ehrlich and Mr. Gruber both have their hands up.
All right, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes, could you go back to the staff allocation for a moment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so here, I just want to clarify. There's property management, resident services and maintenance, the project manager and it's, it's, uh, yeah, so eliminate that. It's really, we, we, it would just say property management comma, resident services.
Okay.
Okay, because the assistant property manager and the property manager themselves, they're just part of the property management.
You know, Mr. Ehrlich, I'm gonna, I'm gonna object to that. Here's what I want to do. I want to make sure that the management plan, that we mirror the language of the management plans, there's no confusion. So whatever we say in the ma- the approved management plan, I want to mirror here and I'm not sure, I'd have to go check it out. So I, what I think is the right way to deal with this is to say to instruct staff to mirror the language in the 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 management, the approved management plan and put that in the conditions. That way we don't have inadvertent uh confusion in the future.
Yeah, if it mirrors what we have in the plan, that's a hundred percent all looking for.
Perfect, good. Mr. Gruber?
I think that that um you dealt with what I was gonna bring up.
Okay, great. All right, let's get to seventy-one and seventy-two.
Sure, can I just put this on really quickly?
Sure. Let's get it right. That's good.
Okay. Um, the numbers are a little bit wonky, but we'll fix that later. Okay.
The project shall provide for disposal of refuse and recyclables as set forth in the management plan in accordance with the town general bylaws. And the applicant shall inform all contractors and subcontractors of subcontractors of the amorous wage and tip theft bylaw. Any questions regarding that? All right. That, we've gone through the conditions. We still, if there are other conditions which board members wish to have the board consider, this is the time to suggest that. Mr. Slaveter?
I have, um, initially I have a question. Are there, excuse me, does Wayfinders have rules regarding occupancy, the number of occupants in any given unit? There are units of varying size. How many, how many people can live in a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom or whatever?
Ms. Poubond, do you want to respond to that or Mr. Gruber?
Yeah, we, we do have standard occupancy guidelines. It's typically two people per bedroom. Uh, obviously, sometimes with families based on square footage and the, we follow the state sanitary guidelines for how much how many people can occupy a space based on the square footage. Um, so you may occasionally find if there's like a family that wants to put three kids in one bedroom, if the square footage allows for that, we have to take that into consideration um if they're applying for a unit. But it's typically, you know, on a one-bedroom, it would be one to two people. On a two-bedroom, it would be two to four people. Three-bedroom would be uh, you know, three to six people.
Okay, and these are part of regulations or codes and sanitary rules and square footage and this is not really discretionary.
Correct. Right.
And is it in your, is it in your documents to the tenants? They're aware of this?
It's usually, it's usually included in our tenant selection plan, which is a publicly available document to applicants and tenants.
Uh, and they have to, they have to divulge, disclose this information when they're applying. How many people will, are in their family and how, or whatever the unit is defined as. And, and what are the rules about long-term or long? I don't know what term is correct. Visitors for more than a weekend. I mean, can somebody, a relative who needs a place to stay? Can that person sleep, live on the couch for an extended period of time? Is that permitted?
So our, our rules in our leases typically have uh very clear information about overnight visitors. So anytime there's an overnight visitor that's gonna stay more than twenty-four hours, they have to come and register that visitor with the office, let us know who it is and how long they're staying. Um, the lease and the rules will also include a provision that prohibits an overnight visitor from staying more than fourteen days in a calendar month or for staying more than twenty-eight days within a twelve-month period. Um, and that has a lot to do with the different affordability regulations, right? There's a lot of regulations with the different funding sources. Um, any, any person staying in the unit for more than that period of time would be considered unauthorized occupant. Um, so if they're gonna stay more than those days that the, the number of days that they're allowed, uh, then they would have to be looking to add the person to their actual lease agreement.
Which they may not be able to do if the unit is already fully occupied, I presume.
That's correct.
You've, you've addressed all these things. Uh, I, I was thinking about this because I went back, all of the discussion up to this point has been about the number of units in the two buildings. So I went back and added up the number of bedrooms in the two buildings. And there are a hundred forty-six bedrooms in these two buildings. So the number, the, the population of the buildings could be anywhere from you know, two hundred to three hundred people. Two people per bedroom is two hundred ninety-two people, so there could be a varying density in these buildings, but I wanted to check that this is something that you address and you're you're prepared, it sounds, for there to be two people in every bedroom in both buildings for a total population of two hundred ninety-two people. And, and this is, I presume you find this fully manageable and workable and reasonable, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And to be honest, thinking about our portfolio as a whole, it's not often that units are at maximum capacity.
Okay, I'm.
Yeah.
It, it was something that had not been discussed at all that I remember and I've been at every meeting, so I wanted to uh to ask you about that. Thank you. Appreciate the.
Great. Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns from?
Um, just public comment for this section?
I'll get to that in just a second. Just wanted to make sure there's no more board stuff. All right, and let's see if there's anybody from the public who wishes to come, to comment on this. If you do, please use the raise hand function or press star nine on your phone. You can speak for up to three minutes. Ms. Williams, you got anybody?
Nope. No fish.
We're, we're keeping, we're keeping the streak going. All right. So we have before us, we have tentatively approved most, the vast majority of these conditions. We had uh fifteen or sixteen before us today. With some amendments to what is before that was contained in the draft, um, the draft doc, decision document. I would entertain a motion that we adopt the conditions as amended, as contained in the draft um discussion document, which we have before us today, and that we authorize staff to make technical and conforming changes to those specific areas where we want to reference back to the management plan or other areas of the document. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the conditions as amended with the authorization for um technical conforming changes? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the conditions. The chair votes aye. Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
And Mr. Henry, are you there? I don't see your picture.
Hold on, let me check the attendees.
He may be having technical issues like I was at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, no.
Well, we'll mark that he did not reply, did not respond to the roll call and the vote was four to zero with one um in technical abstention, abstention. And if he does have some question about this, we can, we can go back and provide him the ability to raise a question. Okay, what I'd like to do now at seven fifty-one, we're getting close to final action on this. What I would like to do is take five minutes to give everybody a chance to grab a cup of water, use the bathroom. What we have left is findings and a final motion. So we are in the, we have the ability to approve or disapprove, take the final vote on this matter tonight. And if we can go through the findings, we might be able to get this done and completed this evening. So let's take five minutes. Everybody be back here at seven fifty-six and we'll continue uh the process. All right? See you in five minutes.
Had to check the Penn State game and see how it's going. Good game tonight.
Okay, we're back, let's see. I see Ms. Murray's hand is up, we'll start up again in just a second when we have Mr. Meadows and Mr. Henry back.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say I think I have been kicked out as a panelist.
Oh.
It happened a little bit, it happened a little bit earlier too, so if Jacinda could promote me again, that would be fabulous.
Great.
Thank you.
There we go. There we have you, good. We have Mr., we all, I also want to note that Mr. Malloy has joined, joined us. Mr. Henry's back. All right. So now, Ms. Williams, if you'd put the findings up on the shared screen?
Sure. Can you see them?
Not yet. There we go. All right. As board members know, we always have to make findings that are the foundation of the decision we make. And those findings are based upon the conditions, the waivers that we have previously approved. So based on the conditions, based on the waivers, based on the, the representations and the submissions from the applicant, as well as from the town, we, we then make findings about the, the project before us, and if we approve these findings, there's, we find that we can approve the project. So there are rules in the, ZBA's rules and regulations, there's three or four pages of things we, of findings we have to make, they're broken into several different topics. And what I would propose to do is go through the topic headers, give everybody a chance to kind of go through the findings briefly, but go through each of the topic headers to make our findings and vote on our findings at the end of the, of this section and vote on whether we can make the following findings. So the first thing that we have before us is that we are meeting local, that this project and Amherst is consistent with local needs and this project is consistent with local needs. That again is something that we did at the very first meeting, that we, that we are, we have met the requirement that we're consistent with local needs and therefore because of that, whatever our decision tonight can't be appealed in, in court. That's the first thing. The first area of findings is that the proposal is in harmony with the goals of the master plan to preserve and expand the number of affordable and moderately priced homes in the town of Amherst. And this, in this section, it runs through the kind of, of units that are provided under this proposal, what the rents are, what the needs are in our community, where, where the needs are for renters in Amherst, what the needs are for low-income renters and very low-income renters. It also talks about the demand and it talks about the housing needs assessment, all of which point to the need for affordable housing and we can find that this provides affordable housing. It's, it's consistent with the master plan of the town, as adopted by the town of Amherst. So that's the first finding. Are there any questions about that? Okay, let's go on to the second findings. But we'll, we'll get to the approval here, we'll approve them all at once unless there's some objection. Let's go on to the next finding. Two, the proposal will protect and advance the health and safety of the residents of the proposed housing as follows. So here we really deal with two things, one is the safety in, of the place itself, so it's on a bus line, it's got, we have found that the, we conditions are that it's, we have safe traffic within the, within the site, that there is safe work, there's, people are safe to move around the area. It also deals with the sprinkler system and other kinds of safety features in the, in the, in the building. And if we move down farther here, it deals with, if I'm, if I'm correct, doesn't it deal with the, yeah, with the stormwater, right, that there's a stormwater, you're, you're also safely dealing with the environment around the area, we have an approved stormwater plan, the ConCon Commission has approved the operation and maintenance plan, they've approved the what's the technical feat, technical name, the second thing, the operation and the order of, what's it, the order of, there's a
The Order of Conditions, Mr. Jacinda.
Yeah, the Order of Conditions, they've done both of those things. So we, and that's, so we're, we're adopting, we're recognizing their, their judgment. It also talks about parking and safety for parking and twenty, on the driveways for each. It deals with primary and secondary snow, uh, snow clearing, assorted things that would deal with health and safety as well as environmental concerns for the area. And those we can say that we can make that, I think we can say we can make that finding based upon the conditions that we have approved. So that's the second finding. The third finding we have to make is that the project will not threaten the natural environment, which is some, I guess is to some extent across, it also was contained in the second one, but this deals more with the Wetland Protection Act, the existence of wetlands near the property, the, how the snow storage does not negatively affect the, the wetlands and that is outside the buffer area. And that the removal of the storage tank and we'll have a, and that we have to then find that the, based on the above, the board finds that the project will have a limited environmental impact per section four point five, one of the board's rules and regulations, and improve the existing conditions and water quality of the project site. So that's the third finding we have to make. The fourth finding deals with, promotes acceptable site and building design in relation to the surrounding, surroundings and municipal and regional planning and preserving open space. So some of this is sort of architecturally, does it, does it fit in with the neighborhood, that's one consideration. The second consideration is, does it promote access to town services, conservation land and other things? Does it create ample roof areas for photo, photo voltaic array, that's hard to say. Photo voltaic arrays, is the property density too much or too little? Is it, and we find that it's more, the town wants more dense housing and this provides more dense housing and are the uses visitable by people with mobility impairment. So the fourth one we have to, if we scroll to the top again, and the fourth finding we have to make is that the project promotes acceptable site and building design in relation to surrounding and municipal and regional planning and are preserving open space. The fifth finding we have to make is, let's get that last one here, I think, the fifth finding is that the board finds that the project will not adversely affect the municipal facilities, block trails or potential trails, disturb wildlife habitats or block scenic vistas per section five, four point five two eight, three two and of the board's rules and regulations. Again, I, but again, the, the site actually restricts or provides, protects wildlife habitats and does not block any scenic vistas or trails. And C is, I don't think C is anything we have to approve at this point. Okay, so those are the findings, one through five, that we need to make in order to, if we wish to approve this application. Are there any questions from members of the board regarding that? Is there any public comment regarding these findings? If there is, please so indicate by using the raised hand function or star nine. I'm assuming we have no public comments?
No public comments, that is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. So I would entertain a motion that the board approve the findings as stated in the draft document before us, findings one through five. Do I have such a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we make the findings from one to five as contained in the draft decision document before us tonight. If there's no discussion about that, I would take, the vote occurs on approval of the findings. The chair votes aye, Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing and the findings are approved. So we come to the last last couple of things we need to do before we approve or we take final action on this proposal. Ms. Williams, could you just scroll down a little bit?
Sure.
I remember correctly, yep, there we go, I remember correctly that some of the plans, we need to make sure that the plans that are listed on the decision document are accurately reflect the most recent plans that are submitted by the applicant. And that we need to have, that there is some discrepancy in the ones before us and that the staff, I believe, should be able to make sure that the plans that are, the final plans that are, are sent to us are reflect, are actually reflected by name on the decision document. And I don't think we want to wait a week to have that happen. I think we should be able to, I think we should give the staff the ability to conform the decision, this decision document with the actual final plans. So is there anybody that would object to that? All right. If there's no objection, staff is authorized to make sure that the, that the correct documents are listed in the decision document. The next thing we need to do is to vote on the approval of this plan of the, let me get the exact, I want to do this absolutely correctly, so hold on a second. We've just worked too long on this not to have the right exact language at the, at the very end. So, the last motion I think before us is to approve a ZBA FY twenty twenty-five dash zero four, zero four, Wayfinders Inc. requesting a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty B, to construct a thirty-one unit mixed-income rental housing in a three-story development with fourteen proposed parking in a three-story development with 14 proposed parking spots on the premises of 31 Southeast Street, MAP 15A Parcel 20, and the RDC Village Center Residence Zoning District, and a 47-unit mixed-income rental housing building and a three-story building with 46 proposed parking spots on the premise of 70 Beltratown Road, MAP Parcel 15C 58, 15C 59, and 15C 60 in the RN and FPC Neighborhood Residence and Flood-Proned Conservancy Zoning District. Do I have such a motion? To prove, to prove the application as condition, with conditions? Do I have such a motion? I hope I have such a motion.
I believe he's dead. So, so moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Murray, do I have anything else I have to make in my motion?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Chair, if we could add, there were a number of members that each missed a session of the meeting. And I know that Ms. Williams has verbally advised that all of them have completed their certification, that they actually reviewed all of the materials from those missed meetings. So Ms. Williams and I will, will complete the information that you see in Section 6A, so that everyone who is about to vote remains eligible to do so.
Yes, everybody, everybody has completed that training, we just need to put the right dates in for completion of that, of the review of the, of the meeting that you missed. Of the one meeting you missed, alright. Very good, thank you, Ms. Murray. Do we have, we have a move, motion and second? Is there any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the comprehensive permission, permit with conditions, and to authorize staff to make technical conforming changes, including changes to the dates of review of missed meetings.
Attorney Freeman has her hand raised.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just wondering if you can also add, and waivers, so the conditions on waivers to the vote?
Sure. Alright, but yes, we were, we're approving the application with conditions, waivers, and findings, all of which have been approved. The chair votes aye. Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
The motion is, the vote is five to nothing, the motion is approved. The application, the comprehensive, the application for a comprehensive permit is approved. Congratulations, Wayfinders, on getting this done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to, to my fellow board members, we spent a lot of time on this, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the contributions of each and every one of you. I hope that you have found it a much fun pleasure in doing this, and I think we should be proud of ourselves for providing new housing, facilitating the new housing in the area. And I want to also thank the staff and our, and Ms. Murray, especially for the extra work you've done to make sure this got done. Ms. Williams, thank you very much. And Mr. Mora, thank you too. So, congratulations, I think this is a good project. And good luck, and I hope it gets built as soon as possible. Thank you all.
You all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight.
Mr. Chair, do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh gosh, yes I do, yes, thank you so much. I got so excited that I forgot the last motion, yes. Thank you, Ms. Williams. I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing on ZBA FY 2025-04, Wayfinders Inc. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the vote occurs on the motion to to close the public hearing, the chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Alright. Hearing is closed, we have completed the business on ZBA FY 2025-04. The next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. Do we have anybody who wishes to, to speak? If they do, please raise the, use the raised hand function on Zoom, or press star nine on your phone.
Nope, no public comments.
Alright. Next order of business is anything not planned, anticipated within the last 48 hours? Ms. Williams, this is where you get to tell us what our schedule is for the upcoming couple of meetings.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So we originally had the ninth on hold for Wayfinders, but we just closed that hearing, so you get the night off, yay.
Well, the sixteenth, the sixteenth off, right?
Yes, yes, the sixteenth, sorry, today is the ninth. You get the rest of the night off, whatever.
Well, we're done early, we are done early, yeah.
The sixteenth, so that is, yeah, go have fun, go enjoy your family, go get some cold, fresh air, something. And then the 23rd, we have Chutesbury and 85 North Whitney. Chutesbury will more than likely be continued to a date certain because WSP cannot be there that night to talk about the new draft memo they sent us. I didn't want to inundate
The WSP is the review, the outside reviewer, right?
Yes, they are the third-party reviewer, they've been doing Blair and Bass and a few other things. I didn't want to inundate you with a ton of information because I knew we had Wayfinders, so I will send you that memo tomorrow, or you might get it from Chris, so you can read up on it in time for the 23rd, but we won't really discuss it because WSP won't be there to answer your questions, unfortunately. So we will have to continue to a date certain in February for that hearing, hopefully everybody can make it, when I say everybody, I mean WSP and Tom Reedy and friends. So that's February right now, and January right now.
And what's 85 Mars Whitney?
Uh, it's Joel Greenbaum's property, he is turning an office space into a three-bedroom, 1.5 bathroom, if I recall correctly. And it's already part of a, a larger development. So I will send you the project application report for that when it's ready, and we'll schedule a site visit as well for the 21st, the Tuesday, the 21st. It'll be during the day just because it's still dark out at like 4:30, so, yeah. That's what we have so far.
So the next time we'll see each other is the 23rd?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I've, I've been writing down and dates, I just want to confirm that I heard the 23rd is, is Chutesbury Solar, and is that, and that, and North Whitney?
Yes, that's correct.
And what was the, that was the 24th, and what was the date after that, did you give us for January 30?
That was January 23rd, I did, we don't have a meeting on January 30th.
Okay. But you, you used the word February a moment ago.
I did, because we have to continue to a date certain in February for Chutesbury. So that might either be the second or third Tuesday in February. Let me pull up the calendar.
Oh, that's what you meant by February, that was, that was the solar continued?
Yes.
Right.
Apologize if that was not clear.
I believe one of those dates, I'm not, I'm not at home near my calendar. So I think I told you that one of those Thursdays, I'm not available.
Okay.
And you wrote back to me, and I just, I am where the wind chill is minus eight. So Craig can just have whatever enjoyment he has, but it's different here.
You're gonna have something to warn you.
You're welcome to join me.
Uh, yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna go jump in the ocean now.
Yeah.
I'm so jealous.
Hi, what a thought. Okay, so I, I don't know if, if I need to be at the solar hearing, I just want to make sure that I remind you that one of the February dates, I already told you I can't make.
Correct.
So if you have an option and you need a full panel, I'm reminding you.
I appreciate the reminder, thank you, Mr. Slaveter, I'll look for the email that you sent.
When we get off, I'll find it, I'll send it to you again.
Okay, and
You know, it might be a really good idea, Ms. Williams, why don't we, why don't you send out to each of the members of the board the upcoming possible dates, and have them respond if they're going to be gone for the next, in the next, the possible dates for the next two or three months? And then they can respond to you as to whether to be able to be there to attend it, because I think I have one in late February that I cannot attend as well, so that would be really helpful, then you are not, you know, and then if we have needs, we can appoint an alternate to fulfill some of the empty seats on the board, if we have to.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, Mr. White?
Uh, just real quick, uh, so I will not be able to make the 23rd meeting because I will literally be driving from North Carolina to Massachusetts, so sorry.
No, it's okay, um, I don't know that we, it's, we're continuing, we're voting to continue, we're not having a discussion. So, I'm not sure you're on the panel for Chutesbury.
No, I'm not.
Yeah. So for 85, we need to get an alternate?
Yeah.
That has not been, we have not opened up a hearing on that yet, have we?
No, this is brand new.
So let's get one of the alternates to to fill Mr. White's spot.
Yeah, sorry about that, guys.
That's why we have alternates. Some people are driving and some people are, you know, sitting in bone air, yeah.
And, and I doubt I'm, I will be of much use just staring out of a windshield, so.
Alright. Any other comments? Questions?
I don't have any.
Alright.
Oh, I do, I'm lying, I do, I just remembered. One of our meetings, upcoming meetings, I'm curious to know if you would like to do a business meeting? Sort of just like housekeeping, do we need to do any votes on terms? And then there are a couple of things that I would like to propose that we look at in terms of the fee schedule for, you know, when people, we have applicants coming through, and they need to do a simple application, like, I don't know, just changing or removing something from their previous special permit, like just one condition, instead of having them pay $600, maybe it's like 350 or something. So things like that, just a little bit of housekeeping before we move forward for the rest of the calendar year.
So why don't you and I talk about what those are, and we'll find, that's a good idea, we should have, it's a good idea to have a house cleaning, a housekeeping meeting, or administrative meeting, and if there's some ideas for, and then we can open that up to members too, if they wish to have anything they wish to discuss on the agenda. So we can look at something in perhaps February for that. That makes a ton of sense. But you and I can talk about what's on the agenda.
Yes, yes.
Reach out to members for what they might like to discuss.
Okay. Alright, that was it for me, Mr. Meadows is ready to jump in the water, we don't want to keep him.
He is ready, he's, he's got the respirator in his mouth, yeah. I love it. Alright.
So moved.
Do adjourn, it's moved.
It's seconded, yeah.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, and this is not discussable. So, the mo, the vote occurs on the motion to adjourn, chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries five to nothing, we are adjourned. Thank you again to everybody. Thanks for all your
Good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Be safe, Mr. Meadow.